Call to order, meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. Would you please join us as we honor America and Wildcat Company from our Navy Junior ROTC Unit presents our colors and then we will do the pledge to the flag.
Color guard, follow. Forward, march. Left, left, right. Color guard, halt. Left, face. Carried, colors. Present, colors. Pissed, salute, pledge.
Congratulations to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carried, colors. Order, colors. Color guard, follow.
And you may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The agenda is approved unanimously. Next we'll move to special reports and presentations. Before we start that, I'd like to welcome Ms. Glenda Langenberg and Ms. Teresa Portwood, both members of the Anderson County Board of Education. They are here evaluating the board tonight and they are doing this as they are working for Level Five through Tennessee School Board Association. Level Five is the highest of five levels that you can reach, so hopefully this will get you where you need to be and we'll soon be seeing you awarded Level Five. So thank you for coming and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on to just some of the good news that's taking place in our school district. Ms. Webb, we'll start with you.
Okay, we're going to start with Robertsville. At the beginning of the school year, sixth grade teachers wanted to focus on building community and creating a culture of kindness with their sixth graders. A house system was implemented with four houses, each with a Latin root name. Amicita, meaning house of friendship, and is depicted in blue. House of respect. Obssequum is represented by green. The purple house is the house of unity. Unitatum. And the house of truth is Veritas, is gray. Students earned points towards their houses by academic successes, grand acts of kindness, and teamwork. At the end of nine weeks, teachers awarded Unitatum, which is the house of unity, as the winning house. Students earned the most points and were rewarded with an ice cream party. Every nine weeks, houses will be evaluated and will be rewarded with a house party. Teachers are seeing the benefits of implementing the house system this year. That's from Robertsville.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
I have the honor of good news from Glenwood. Students, families, and teachers gathered back together again to celebrate STEM Night. The theme this year was Glenwood Takes Flight. There were close to 500 students and families participating with this incredible evening. Every grade level had a table or an activity for both students and their families to learn together. Many thanks go to, many thanks to the following organizations and clubs that showed their support. Clinch River Environmental Studies Organization for the Habitat Management and Bluebird Boxes. Oak Ridge High Advanced STEM Class for the T-shirt cannons and, what's that, tribe?
Tribeshades.
Tribeshades. I'm sorry, can't get my lips right. Oak Ridge High Wildbots and Jefferson Middle School First LEGO League and Cat, the tri, Vasque, Vasque is for the Atomic Hope Literature and STEM and Mining for Uranium. Woodman of the World's Planetarium, Planetarium, Lauren Blair and Tara Ne, Caniser? Okay, I got it. From TSA, Oak Ridge High Computer Science, UT and East Tennessee STEM Hub for the 3D Printing, Tennessee Tech for providing a green screen, the Children's Museum, ORNL, the museum, and the Oak Ridge Schools Aviation. Okay, what happened to it? Sorry, it just decided to leave.
While you're searching, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Ms. McLean?
Thank you.
Okay, I have good news from Willowbrook. Congratulations to comprehensive education classroom teacher Brittany Newcombe for being awarded the WBIR Educator of the Week. She is a University of Tennessee graduate in her first year of teaching at Willowbrook. She does an amazing job challenging and preparing her students for life. Way to go, Bethany.
Ms. Agel?
Also from Willowbrook, Willowbrook hosted the Fall Intercession for over 100 students from both Willowbrook and Linden Elementary. Students focused on English Language Arts, math, and STEM skills. They also visited Oak Forest Farm and learned more about agricultural career paths. Willowbrook held a college and career awareness week prior to going on fall break with multiple visits from members of the community to share their careers. Students heard from a Delta Airline pilot, an Oak Ridge Police Officer, a seamstress from the Milwaukee Repertory Theater, and a finance director. And that's good news.
Back to Mr. Stevens.
Okay, the last few on the thanks for the STEM program is the Children's Museum, ORNL, the museum, Oak Ridge Schools Aviation for drone, and Glenwood Book Fair. Thank you to Tracy Seismore and the grade level STEM innovators for making this a large or rather huge success. Glenwood has a, had a terrific intercession over the fall break. There were 64 students that took part in dissecting owl pellets purchased from O-Row Grant, coding Ozobots, and the B-Box, Glow Math, LEGO Logic Challenges, and enriching literary, literacy work. It was so much fun with a lot of learning. And that is good news from Glenwood.
Thank you. And that's just some of the good news taking place in our school system. Mine is a reminder, hopefully you don't need to be reminded, but early voting is now open with the election taking place on November the 8th. Please take it to be your duty to get to the polls and vote. A lot of local elections that are very important going on as well as state elections as well. So please get to the polls and vote. That being said, we move on next to the public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Please cast your votes. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next we move to items for action. Item A, FY23 Preschool Policy Committee Bylaws. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Preschool Policy Committee Bylaws.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
As the board knows, this item and the next item are all things that we do on an annual basis. Each year, the bylaws are reviewed and updated by the Head Start Policy Committee, and this update requires approval by the Policy Committee as well as the Board of Education.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item B, 2022 Preschool Head Start Self-Assessment. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the 2022 Preschool Head Start Self-Assessment.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
The self-assessment is a head start requirement in which a team of preschool staff, parents, and community partners closely evaluate each service area of the program. Within each service area, strengths and areas to be strengthened are identified. The team then identifies areas on which to focus as priority items. These are the areas in which funding will be an area of focus. The self-assessment and the community assessment are two primary documents that drive the spending and budget development of the preschool.
Comments or questions? Ms. McLean?
I've had the opportunity to serve on this preschool policy committee and there is so much work that goes into this. And they are great at involving so many of the parents and community leaders and it's been a joy to serve, but a huge amount of work.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item C, FY23 ARP Homeless 2.0 Grant. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 ARP Homeless 2.0 Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
As you can see from the memo, this grant allows the district to provide other extraordinary services and assistance to homeless children and youth to attend school and fully participate in school activities. It also provides for expenses necessary to facilitate identification, enrollment, retention, educational success of homeless children and youth, and temporary emergency housing for three nights. And this is a carryover from last year, the amount you're approving tonight.
Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, surplus, surplus sale of off-road vehicle body. I assume this is no engine in this off-road vehicle.
It is not roadworthy at this time, yes.
Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the surplus sale of an off-road vehicle body that has no value to Oak Ridge Schools.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers?
I'm going to ask Mr. Lay just to give us a brief summary of why we're doing this tonight.
This vehicle actually does have a drivetrain, an engine, and a transmission, axles, tires, but that would be about it. There's no body, no seats, no bumpers, things like that. Basically, this was purchased to make a rock crawler and we had great interest at the time, but we have other things at this time that really are just more of a priority such as building an airplane and other projects, so we've just decided that we no longer need this. The reason this is coming to the board is there's a competition where students can build an off-road vehicle and compete with it, but they're only allowed to spend so much money, was it $500? I think it's $500. So if, if we can basically give those students this vehicle to start with, they can likely create a vehicle to participate in this competition and stay another $500 window, but our concern was to make sure we had a document signed by the parents of these young men because what we have left is of no value, but we want to make sure there was no liability issues. So that's why it's coming before you and the parents will sign that document and we will wish our students the best and clean out our parking lot.
Come, come answer questions. Ms. Agel?
This, this is a project that has had some good learning experiences associated with it, with multiple classes, welding included, but it has served its purpose within Oak Ridge Schools, and if some of our students can carry it further for a dollar, that's wonderful and I support it.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, we'll have to say this next item gave some of the more mature members of this board a learning experience as we learned what Beyblade was. And now we are, we're in the crowd now. So this is approval of a new club at Oak Ridge High School. Dr. Borchers?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the ORHS Beyblade Club.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers?
You were not alone as Mr. Lay and I were YouTube-ing Beyblade this morning because the forum does not have a lot of information on it. The club purpose, it says to play and discuss Beyblades, and the club activities was play with Beyblades. So we had to do the same search that you did, but I think we all now are a little more versed on what that, on what that is.
Come answer questions. Ms. McLean?
Maybe we should have this club come before our meeting sometime and give us a demonstration so we can all get on the same page with the Beyblade Club.
Or invite us to a meeting where they do this. Ms. Agel?
For the public who have not yet searched YouTube for this, it's basically tops, spinning tops.
All right. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Before we move on to the next item, I meant to mention earlier, I had the opportunity to speak to retired teachers last week, and one of the things that was of great interest and a question was, how are we so fortunate to get so many grants? And I said, well, number one, we are very fortunate. And I said, when you have people who are motivated to do that and people who are professionally able to do that, it has meant a great deal, not just financially to our district, but to provide programs that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to do. So Dr. Williams and Dr. Cross, I gave both of you great accomplishments for helping us do that. I know there's many others that do, but thank you again for, both of you for helping make that happen. And don't stop. Don't stop doing that. Okay, I'll take the next item. The board has done some modifications to the superintendent's contract, and I will be the one making the recommendations, so I make that recommendation to approve the modifications to the superintendent's contract, and I will entertain a motion to do that. Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, next to items for information, enrollment, and attendance. Mr. Lay?
Yes, sir. If you look at our numbers and comparison, basically the end of the 2021, 2022 school year, we have increased our enrollment by 149 students, which is what we have suspected since August, and that is holding true. Our elementary schools, two are tracking very well as far as absences. We have two, they're basically about where they were last year, and then our secondary schools basically are about where we were last year. So overall, we're doing well and we're pleased about our increased enrollment.
Comments or questions? And I'm not going to ask you to speak to this, but just maybe a brief comment, but not going to detail. I know there was a meeting discussing truancy that was held with the district attorney and other individuals. Any comments you want to make about that?
Yes, sir. I think in general, I would, it's a, there was perhaps a perception that we were not doing things as we have done in the past. And when we met with General Clark, I think he was very pleased to hear that we have never stopped monitoring absenteeism. We have never stopped having our monthly truancy meetings, and we have continued to basically refer students for truancy or parents for educational neglect as warranted. And we did tell him the challenge two years ago was to, once again, you know, if you were a close contact, first of all, if you were to, if you were a close contact, you were out for 10 days, and if you ended up getting COVID, you're out for 10 days, and then after that period, someone else get in the family. So, so we realized we were not referring as many students to either juvenile court or adult court during that time, but it wasn't that we weren't monitoring, we just basically had the pandemic and it was hard. But, but we have provided General Clark a, our schedule that shows of our truancy meetings we're having. We provided him all of the forms that we have that basically outlines our truancy steps and basically the forms that we use to refer a person for truancy. And then we're even, we're even, we've made a commitment, we will start giving him a document monthly that basically will show him the date that a student was referred for truancy, the date that the SAV Truancy Review Team made a decision, and basically the date that that document arrived at our juvenile court, and basically the date that the student would attend court. So, so we're going to provide that monthly to General Clark, and that way he'll have a better idea of what our timeline looks like, basically between referring that student, approving that student, and getting them in court, basically for, to help us make some improvement in their attendance. So it was a very positive meeting.
Very good, good, great. Thank you. Next is the financial report. Any questions on that report or comments? Next we move to items for discussion. Old business, new business, or communications. Got a couple. Mr. Bob Abey contacted me and said, I would to make this board aware that the State Board is meeting at Roan State in Harriman on Thursday and Friday. On Thursday, the primary topic is going to be a tour of their middle college, and on Friday, and that takes place at noon on Thursday, and then on Friday is their regular scheduled meeting. And he extends an invitation to any board member that would like to attend. Certainly are welcome to do that. On November the 2nd, which is Wednesday, the Board of Education will be having a retreat beginning at 8:00 a.m. that morning. On November the 9th, the board will be visiting Oak Ridge High School beginning at 8:30 that morning. And then the rest of that week, the board will be attending the Tennessee School Board Association Leadership Conference and Convention in Nashville. On November the 16th, I sent you information from Chief Nichols regarding the Navy Junior ROTC review that will take place in Wildcat Arena. If you haven't been, you need to go. It's very impressive on that morning. And on November 21st, the board will meet again at that time.
This Friday, in this room at 10 o'clock will be our monthly truancy meeting.
And tomorrow, here is the data presentation starting at 8:30.
8:30.
Right in here. So if board members are available and would like to attend that, that will take place in here tomorrow morning. Busy times. Dr. Borchers, anything else?
No, I think that's a great way to end it. We're always excited about our PLC data sharing with our principals. It's always a wonderful day, so yeah, if you can make it, that'd be great.
All right. Thank each of you all for being here and thank you what you do in your schools each day, and thank to all of those who are listening. I actually ran into a person the other day that said, came up to me and said, "I'm one of the millions that listen to this good board meeting." So there's one out there somewhere, I know, for a fact. So Travis and Dave, thank you all back there for keeping us up. Lynn, thank you as always for all that you do for us, and we stand adjourned. Lynn, thank you as always for all that you do for us, and we stand adjourned.